I'll now call this meeting to order. Will you please rise and join me for the planks, all of you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe so.
Yes, of course.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming. For the record, all staff are present, as are all city councilmen. Sergeant Harris is standing in for Chief Tucker. Okay, first up is the consent agenda. Council knows the drill.
I move that we accept all items between... Yeah, A and G.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilman Judith Dunley and seconded by Councilman Brenda Kinzer to accept items A through G. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay, we are at our public comment period. Looks like we've got a full room, so I'll read the statement here. As you come up to the podium, please state your name and your address. Remember, you are addressing the council and not each other. This is not a time to engage in arguments or cost examination. Please be respectful of each other and stick to three minutes so everyone has a chance to speak. You're allowed one time at the podium. With that, who would like to be first? Neil?
Thank you. My name is Dr. Neil Ishihara, 801 McLean. I'd like to the city council to consider these alternatives to the mayor's library proposal. If the mayor and those of you who support this proposal are in agreement with funding the city library up to the district library's mileage rate, then the amount of $372,385, as calculated by the latest county auditors' numbers, is approximately $74,000 above the present amount for real and personal property taxes budgeted for the city library. This additional money, if given to the library, can provide for some of the necessary improvements that have been on hold for years. Or, the city council can improve a consummatic bond that could be scaled down to a quarter of the mayor's proposal to $750,000 for the purpose of remodeling and expanding the existing city library by 5,000 square feet without changing any personnel, arguing over board representation, transferring the collection, or constructing a building that would be given away. This would be a bigger, better library and retain all our staff without any tax increases, as the mayor repeatedly likes to say. The mayor's proposal is the least attractive of the options because it offers the most risk to the city due to the high bond amount, coupled with the continuing possibility of the dissolution of the library district. It offers the least value since we are transferring millions of dollars in city assets to the county while retaining no ownership, which is a very poor return on investment. And with minimal or no representation on the district library board, the cost to the city far outweighs the benefits. There are many more alternatives to the mayor's proposal, but my choice would be to expand the existing city library. I highly recommend the city council members attend the Central Skagit Library Board meetings since the minutes to their meetings have gotten less detailed, especially in the past few meetings. However, they have been far more transparent than the city to this point. This issue may turn into one of the most costly for the city, so obtaining the most unfiltered information possible would be critical to making any decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Julie Anderson. I've lived in Cedar Willie for forty years. I have been a person that's used to Cedar Willie Library for forty years. First thing we did when we moved here. And what... I have just recently been aware of what's going on. And I think that what you folks decide should be voted on by people... I'm in the city limits, and I think that people should be able to vote on what's going on. It shouldn't just be pushed down our throat. We'll remember the next election who did it. So, thank you.
Ms. Anderson, could you state your address, please, for the record?
314 Concord.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, may I just ask a question before we begin more public speaking?
It's public comment time.
Okay. Well, I guess I just want to... I mean, in previous, you stated...
It's public comment time, so it's the public's chance to talk, not ours. You'll get your chance, Brett, I guarantee.
So, good evening. I'm Christine Johnson, 801 McLean. Last week, I attended the City Works event, and it was great weather and great good participation by the city departments. Chief Klinger and I got caught up on some gossip, and of course, we discussed serious city business, too. Anyway, I noticed good attendance of residents, too, mostly children, who many of them I learned were there with their parents and chaperones because our city librarian, Deborah Peterson, had the excellent idea of inviting schoolkids to attend, and our children's librarian, Alia Allen, arranged for those field trips. So, it was a good job all around by the city, and it was fun, and the kids enjoyed it. But I did just want to point out that a lot of participation from those kids did come because of our city's library staff. So, I hope you all received and had the chance to read my email to you last Friday on the library proposal and our students. And so, I have a few more comments on that issue. As I said, I care deeply about all our children and their ability to get a good education. I want all of them to do better. I want the higher achieving ones, I want them to be challenged and inspired to do even more. The middle students, I want them to find their passion and understand they'll need to push themselves with our help to reach their goals. And the ones who are struggling should know that we'll do all we can to help move them up and find success in life, too. So, what I want... What I would like to see is everyone, the entire bell curve moved over so all our children are doing better. And to do that, our children all need to have good reading comprehension because it's essential for success in every subject. And kids develop good reading comprehension by instruction, yes, but also by being exposed to lots of good books that they'll enjoy reading. So, these good books, they need to be close to them so that they'll be more likely to get their hands on the books and become better readers. Our school district is one of the largest in the state. Our buses run over a half million miles every single year. Some of our kids are way out there, and the district library should be getting books to them. Our Cedar Willie City students deserve a clean, comfortable, well-lit, and well-stocked library. Let's do the improvements ourselves as a city for our Cedar Willie Public Library. Our students don't need a Taj Mahal-type, bigger, better library, but they do need a good selection of books and good librarians who know them and can connect them with the books that will expand their horizons so they can do better in life. Children in Cedar Willie should read as many good books as possible. And finally, our children are our future, and if they do better, our entire community will benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Next up?
Paul Abrams, 725 South Road. I'm also a member of the Cedar Willie Library Board. And I would like to state that while much of what the mayor's proposal has presented to me makes sense, looks good, there is one problem, and that is that all authority will be vested in the county library board. There will be no city input. The city may have an advisory role, that's possible, but at the end of the day, it will all be down to the authority of the county library district. We will not have a voice. And as a reflection of that, we had a library meeting, library board meeting, this evening And I believe you have our message. It says that, "Dear Mayor and City Council, we, the undersigned Cedar Willie's Library Board, do not accept the terms of the mayor's proposal. To give the city's library collection and equipment as correctly presented, we would suggest instead that the Central Skagit Library District consider contracting with the Cedar Willie City Library for an appropriate amount of money to be decided to provide me and library services to the residents of the Central Skagit Library District." And it's signed by all five members.
Thank you, Albert. Anybody else?
My name's Melissa McHumber, and I live at 417 Spring Lane. I just want to say that thank you guys all for your hard work, and especially your work with the public library and the Central Skagit Library. I, for one, am extremely excited about this opportunity. I think our city employees, I just applaud them for what they've done with their limited resources. And our city library has never been funded as well as it should have been, and they've done a lot with that, and they've worked really hard. And so, I'm excited because this is an opportunity where we can partner with another entity and just grow the resources we have for every student in our Cedar Willie School District. I think that's just really important, and I think both of these entities can bring things to this partnership and that it can benefit everyone. So, I just want to keep working on this collaboration. We're one of the only counties in the state without a countywide system, and countywide systems work like this. You have a board that runs them, and you share resources, and you can check out books from everywhere. And I want that, our county, to work towards that goal. And this partnership, I think, could really be an example to the rest of the county about how we can work together and have increased resources for all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Anybody else? Who gets you next, Dennis?
Gary Booty, 1035 Clifford Street. I'm not the speaker that a lot of these other people have been, but they're voicing my opinion totally, except for one. I think that we're giving away the keys to the city. I think that we're allowing a different group to take over our library system. From what I've read, it sounds like we are stepping back and letting somebody else take care of it. I agree, the schools need a good system for being able to check out library cards without getting their books, but I don't feel that it's appropriate for the Cedar... For the city of Cedar Willie to give over everything they've got to a different group and have absolutely no... No way of grabbing onto anything. I'm sorry, I don't speak very well, but I think you understand what I'm saying, that they're... We're giving it away. We're walking away from a fantastic library that we have right now. The other thing that was mentioned was about this pool. I can't imagine what's going on as far as this swim thing that you've got planned. Concrete is playing on one, Mount Vernon is playing on one. If we want to get into a pool system, let's think about a swimming pool, something that the high school, the middle school can use that would be very useful for our groups rather than having to go to Mount Vernon to go to a swimming pool or Anacortes to go to a swimming pool. There's lots of opportunities for all of us to be able to use a pool that was acceptable for everybody to use as opposed to a play area. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Dennis, did you want to speak?
I'm Dennis O'Neill, and I reside at 109 Tellcott Street in Cedar Willie. You know, I've only been here for about eleven years, and I used to come to a lot of these meetings. The ones I really came to, which we got fun about, was Deluxe Recycling. And honestly, you know, I know your intentions are really good, and I know Keith there's putting a lot of work into this and everything, trying to work something out, but, you know, it's on such a fast track, run, 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 before the voters really know what's going on. I haven't seen very much in the newspaper, pro or con, I just know this thing is really on a fast track. I know we were assured when Deluxe was looking at over here across from the high school that there was going to be public hearings and everybody's going to have time to weigh in. And this sounds so much like that, that it's just going to be bam, 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 we can all oppose it, we'll agree to it. Our negotiating team did the best they could, they get it done. Two or three years down the road, when everything starts going to pieces, all the goodwill and all the feelings, cozy feelings, when that's in the district are gone, it's just going to disintegrate. It's like these performance reviews everybody's talking about, we're going to keep the old employees. If anybody's worked for a corporation, they know how long that goes. The first one, you get a negative performance review, and the second one, if the person holding it, you haven't measured up, you're gone. There isn't a recourse for these employees, they're just going to be gone. And you may... Mayor may not be there, but all of you, you might just say, "Well, you know, it's not in our hands anymore. We're really sorry about that, but wish we could do something," but it's done. And I just really find it interesting that there's no library representation over there. There isn't a library board or anything represented in the new magazine that came out that was printed in April. No mention of the library at all. It sounds like it's already a done deal, you know? And we seem to find money for parks, spray parks and upgrades, roundabouts, but we can't take care of one of the fundamental things the older people in this community like, and that is ability to go to libraries, sit down and read a book, and have our city council in charge of it rather than inform it out to someone else. I mean, you could do the same thing with the police department, turn it over to the sheriff's department like some of the communities have done. Maybe that would be a bigger cost savings. So, you know, I don't think there's any way you can really say that you're going to have any input into when Central District takes over. It's going to be a done deal. You're not going to have any feedback to it, and you can wash your hands and walk away. But it just seems to me that I think you should hold up a little bit and get more voter and ask for it. Go out and ask for voter and the people in Cedar Willie to comment on this thing. And there's ways of doing that without waiting for a full election, but the elections are only, what, a year and a half away, two years away? And now, we're on a fire... I mean, gosh, it's had to be on the back burner somewhere because it came about so soon. So, it should have been mentioned when you're running for election, what your views are, and maybe that would have not been so good. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Dennis. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is James Moore. I live at 820 Dana Drive. First, I would, contrary to what some of the things I've heard here, I'd like to compliment the mayor on trying to get some of the traffic on Highway Nine coming down the hill.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
I'd like to thank you for trying to get some of the traffic on Highway Nine coming down the hill. I tried to get the state patrol to put in jump scales, and no one seemed to be interested. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank the police department, Sergeant Harris there, and all the ones that serve us. Thank you very much for your time and service. However, with the library's concern, none of us get a feeling that these people here don't want any input. That's a feeling that we get. And I, for myself, I want to know how this is funded. I want to know if our taxes are going up? And people will say, "Well, that's up to the county because our taxes go up because the county is involved in this." How's it going to be funded? That's what... I don't hear any clear answers to that question. So, if it's going to raise my taxes, I'm concerned. And if it is going to raise taxes, I think it's an issue that should be put before the voters here in Cedar Willie. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is... Am I on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Mary Anderson. I live at 928 Beachley Road here in Cedar Willie. I also own other property in Cedar Willie City Limits. First of all, I would like to express my gratitude to the city council. I'm so impressed that you people come every other week to these meetings, and sometimes every week. I can't manage it because I also play the organ at a church up in Bellingham, so I can't be here as often as you, and I'm really impressed that you have made this commitment. Having said that, I guess you've gathered from the crowd tonight that people are passionate about their city library. I hope that's making... Being made plain to you that people are very concerned about the status and the future of their city library. Regarding the mayor's proposal, I understand that people are concerned about the library staff. I understand that people are concerned about where the library will be. It was never about the city library jobs. It's never been about that. It's always been, for those of us who use the library, that the library belongs to us. We have been paying for it for over a hundred years, and to have it be gifted away to some other entity is something that needs to be addressed with the public. They need to be allowed to know that that's what's happening to their library. And if you take out a consummatic bond and then make us pay for it, and then at the end of the terms of the bond, when it's finally paid for, it's given to another entity, that's like asking me to pay for my neighbor's mortgage, and at the end, he owns the house after I've made all the payments. And that just does not seem right to me, and I'm pretty sure it doesn't seem right to any of the people in the audience tonight. So, I would like... You're taking my three minutes. So, I would like to ask all of you deeply to consider where you want the city of Cedar Willie to be. In another hundred years, are we going to be the city that gave up our library to the county? Or are we going to be the city that respected and revered education, learning, and putting those tools into the hands of our children? Thank you very much for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Going once, going twice. Okay, public comment is now closed. Thank you all. And Brett, now is your chance. You don't get to cut them off.
One, I guess, you know, there's a lot that you hear, and I would, I think, appreciate maybe a fact sheet created by the city. I know there's not very many facts in the game, and we're only just getting started. I know Deborah, librarian, she... Director, she's on the negotiating team. They haven't even met. They're going to meet in May. So, those facts, there are no facts besides the mayor's proposal and then the acceptance from the library district to even negotiate with the city on what this is going to look like. When I got married to my wife, I didn't give away my awesome record collection to her. You know, this is a partnership, and I think that's what we're here for, is to see a partnership that works well for the city, for the county, and for everybody. But again, right now, we're letting fears, fear, and misinformation kind of cloud that, I believe. And I think we, you know, it's like a race is about to be starting, but an hour before the gun goes off in the runner's race, people are screaming cheater. And I don't think it's really fair to us to put that weight on us because we don't even know the facts. Deborah doesn't know the facts from the library because they haven't even met with the county to negotiate yet. So, I just think, let's get some facts before we start, you know, pointing fingers at people because there are no facts.
So, moving on.
May I ask, negotiations start May 9th, is that correct?
That will be the first meeting, yes.
That's the first meeting. That's why there are no facts yet. No, you have goals that you want to achieve, and you bring them to the table. Deborah, if you're interested in certain aspects of this negotiation and partnership, Deborah is on that negotiation team. I would talk to her.
Okay, this is not what we do here. We don't engage in argument. All right, item five is a public hearing. Aaron, do you want to introduce that?
Sure. Page 75 of the council packet has this item. Both Nathan's here tonight as well as Larry Otis, consultant who's been helping us with this project. You can see the preliminary design up on the wall over there for the memorial park renovation and spray park project. So, this is something that the council's been working on for some time, the city, through different councils, I should say, since this council's only been together now for four months. The most recent activity was our open house that was held in conjunction with the City Works Days. We had the film group there as well as Larry and Nathan, and of course, a number of city representatives out and about, and they were taking comments from citizens, answering questions, trying to understand if there are any concerns that needed to be addressed at this phase of the project. A couple changes were made from that day to now with the design you see there. Fairly minor, I think, modifications addressing access to the senior center for the Meals on Wheels program was one of those changes. So, the timeline you can see on page 75, we're at the April 27th piece of this puzzle, which is city council review, and if you so choose, authorization to apply to the Recreation and Conservation Office for funding. If you do proceed with that authorization, the technical review will occur in mid-May. At this point, it's scheduled for May 17th in Olympia. And later in the summer, we'll have the full-blown application and competitive review process with ranking in the fall in anticipation of the next legislative session. If successful, we would be funded in the next legislative session, and our match for this project would have to be certified approximately one year from now. So, that's the time period to go from today to the fundraising goal. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to visit Sturbach Park recently in Anacortes. They are in the process of completing their fundraising. They were ranked for an RCO grant in the last cycle and have a really pretty sign-up in the park with a picture of their spray park, as well as their fundraising goal for the community to come to the table and help make the match. So, they're in that phase, which in our timeline would be, I guess it would be approximately six or eight months from now that we would be in that phase in earnest, that is, knowing that we're ranked project. If successful, then the project would be funded in summer '17. We would complete our fundraising that fall, get the design fully developed, you know, make any last changes to design. Of course, we'd continue to engage in the public process, and then in 2018, it would be built and opened. So, if you go then to page 76, you can see a detail of the project budget, and, you know, this budget has been moving, and it will continue to move. And the reason for that is that we have a concept design at this point. We don't have a full design, and we have shifted elements. So, the budget that you see here has a total of $682,000. Since this draft was put in, we've made some modifications internally, not to the bottom-line budget, but we think we can shift the... budget, but we think we can shift the plaza construction, as well as the spray park construction itself, down a bit, and we need to accommodate some engineering and design costs, as well as some project overhead. So the 682 doesn't change, but the numbers within are different, and I would expect that you would ultimately see a different final budget once this thing is fully designed. At this point, we're using estimates, although I think we can be committed to the bottom-line cost. So you have the ability to set, you know, essentially a do-not-exceed number that we'd have to work within. And I recognize that's frustrating, no doubt, for folks in the audience, too. One of our issues at Memorial Park is, you know, we're looking for an entire park upgrade. So it's border-to-border in all directions, virtually every surface touched. So existing trees removed, existing sidewalks reconstructed with ADA-compliant sidewalks, new sidewalks built, parking lot improvements, storm drainage improvements, playground that's ADA-accessible, and on and on and on. So lots of new features, but everything up to the modern requirements. So then on page 77 begins the resolution, 77 through 79. That's an RCO form resolution. So you'll see I have inserted the city of Cedar Willie in there a few times, but everything else is prepared by the Attorney General's Office. Page 80 then is a reproduction of the design, and you can see some visualizations of the spray park. Something that the Philbin group did here that I haven't seen in other spray parks, I thought was fairly clever, was the integration of a labyrinth into this. So spray parks are used seasonally, much like a baseball field or a soccer field. You know, they have their season. In our case, it's when it's warm out. The labyrinth extends that for really any time it's not covered in snow. So I thought that was really thoughtful of the Philbin group. And the last thing I'd call your attention to begins on page 85. Because the resolution references the project funding agreement, which is also a form agreement from the state, I wanted you to have that. It's fairly lengthy. I'm not asking for your approval of it tonight, but the resolution clearly says that if you are funded, that's the agreement you'll have to sign. So I wanted you to see that in advance. Like most fund agreements of that nature, there's really no...it's not a negotiated agreement. It's, "If you want our money, sign the agreement." So RCO funding, just for those who might not have been here for the last few meetings where we've talked about this, is a 50% match. So everything we do in-kind and every dollar donated is matched by RCO at 50%. And in this case, with a called approximately $700,000 budget, we'd be looking for about $350,000 from RCO. The remaining funds would come from a combination of our in-kind work, park impact fees. I would anticipate the use of some real estate excise tax dollars, and then, of course, donations. And we have already met with several different possible funding entities about potential future donations for the project, and we're feeling like we're giving some real positives from folks who like to fund projects of this nature. Any questions I can answer at this point?
No, I just wanted to add, since I heard some questions about funding out here, and I know a lot of people don't understand it. I didn't understand it and probably don't really well now anymore, but I understand better. We don't have just a big checkbook that we decide whether we're going to buy oranges or gasoline. That's not how the budget works. These funds are specific and have to be used for specific uses. So like the RIT funds that Aaron talked about, these are the kinds of funds that are specifically for these types of capital projects. So I know it seems funny if you have a pothole in front of your house and you wonder why we're building a park. It's not the same money. It's not one big account. So there's rules to all the types of money that we use. And I would reiterate, we've reached out to, I guess, the usual suspects, all our service groups, and we've got a very positive response. And the park is designed so that certain groups, in my case, I work with Rotary that helped build this park and the skating rink, or the skate park over here, we got those for really pennies on the dollar because the labor and the things that our people donate help us leverage that. Another example, although it's different, the roundabout out at Jamison. I think that's about a $2.5 million project. Our part of that's $39,000. And that's how we get things done in Woolly. So just a little explanation on the...it's not just one big pot of money. It's divided up, and the law requires us to use it in certain ways.
Does council have any questions or comments before I open the public hearing? So at 7:35, I will open a public hearing on this topic. Anybody like to approach and speak? Sam Rolles, sir?
I'm Luke Lawrence. I live at 1148 Road Road. My concern is if you build an age-specific park, a water park for toddlers, two to five, what's a teenager's going to do? We can't keep the parks open we have now. We can't keep the restrooms open. They vandalize them. The teenagers, the age group from nine to 15, 16, they have nothing to do. I've got grandkids that wish there was a baseball court or a covered baseball court, or basketball court, I'm sorry, that they could use or something. There's nowhere for them to go. There's no facilities for them to use, and you're going to spend all the money on a water park that we just rebuilt and put a new playground here not two years ago. Built bathrooms down there, lock them up. Now, what's going to happen there? We have to pay a caretaker to watch the park while we rebuild it again for the little kids. The teenager needs something to do, and that's something that the council needs to address and think about. There's no place for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
There again, Gary Moody, 1035 Clifford Street. As I mentioned before, this seems insane. Just because you're allowed to get some money some way...I worked for Seattle City Light for many years, and we always had a budget. And at the end of the year, my God, we're going to go out and buy something that we really don't need because we've got the budget. We don't want to lose that budget. This seems like the same type of thing. Just because the money's available, we don't need to use that money for that purpose. Like I said, a swimming pool would be something really useful for all ages, not just for toddlers. It would be something that we could all benefit from. My wife is physically handicapped in some ways. To be able to find a place to go swimming without going to Mount Vernon to the YMCA would be fantastic. Why spend all that money on something that very few kids are going to be able to use? There are other water parks available. I'll go out and spray them with my hose if they need to be sprayed down, but I can't go use that water park. It isn't something I'm going to be able to benefit from, other than my taxes are going to go up. And it doesn't matter, my taxes from the city of Cedar Willie, taxes from Washington State, Washington's taxes from the United States of America, there's going to be somewhere that money's got to come from. And if that money has to come out of my pocket, I'd like to be able to use some of it. And you're not getting that point right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Judith Meadows. I live at 8642 Westerland Road. I'm not well informed about the spray park, okay? But what I've heard just tonight, you're talking about allocating funds, but everything that you're involved in is taking the mayor's time, the council's time, Mr. Berg's time, planning commission's time, and that time is not available for other things that the citizens of Cedar Willie might actually enjoy having happen. So that's a cost that has to be examined. And, you know, when you said, you said this plan has been all developed, and we've, you know, checked with our groups, you know, Rotary and other groups in town, you know, what I said under my breath back there is noticeably left out is the citizens of Cedar Willie. We've checked with the groups. We've checked with the groups, and it's like, how much time has already been put into this? You know, it seems to me to be important to do a cost-benefit analysis, okay? If you're going to allocate, you know, all this time, energy, and something, including cutting down all the blooming trees in the area, which of course, I think is a crappy idea, do a cost-benefit analysis. How many people, how many people in Cedar Willie are going to benefit from a spray park that is open two months of the year with a labyrinth which can extend it? How many people say are going to benefit from that compared to the city library that people are using every hour that it's open, which maybe it could be open a little longer? So, you know, and what Mr. Sandstrom...well, I guess that's on a different point, but this whole concept of, "We're negotiating, we're planning, but we don't have any facts." Well, to me, that's such ludicrous lack of thinking that I'm embarrassed even to hear it being put forth. And I think one of the things that seems to be going on is that these plans are all being done, you know, time, energy. If we just added up how much time any of you have put into these projects that have already been done, I suspect it would be a lot of time.
Judith, you're coming up on your time.
And at your particular salaries, that time is quite a bit of money. It bothers...I will end. It bothers me that you're coming up with these big concepts and doing all these things and saying, "Oh, we haven't done anything yet." But it hasn't been brought to the public to say, "What would you like?" It's being presented like, "Here's what you're going to get." And I think that's what's horribly wrong in this city. Thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm the city council. My name is Elliot Anderson. 928 Beachley Road, Cedar Willie. Yeah, I'd like to speak a little bit about this.
Cut to the mic. To the mic, please.
This beautiful architecture rendering here. The time when I was still in, many years ago, engineering, land development, and construction, these renderings always looked very nice. But as the previous speaker was saying, when we're going to focus close to a million dollars for kids not bigger than this, for a limited time of the year, why not look to Bellingham, to Arnhemus, the aquatic center, something that can be used year-round for everybody? It may cost a little bit more, but if we use it year-round and make money. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for listening.
Christine Johnson, 801 LaPlaine. I've been to all the meetings lately, so I have been paying attention to the spray park a little bit. And there's many things that I like about doing a renovation of that park. A couple of years ago, you planned to do a renovation, and...
Excuse me. Can we not talk while we have testimony, please?
So there's many things I do like about the renovation. The one thing I'll just touch on tonight, though, and I want to thank Nathan for answering my questions at the city works. He did a great job, and he called me back when I had more questions, so thank you. My main concern at that point was how much it would cost to operate and maintain. And it turns out, it's not a huge number. It could be. But what I see now, which concerns me, and I hope you'll take into consideration very carefully, is that about a month ago, the number was $400,000, and now it's gone up to $682,000. So please consider that very carefully. Thank you.
Ladies first.
I'm Ali Edson, 1917 7th Street. So I go to the middle school, and I think that we should have, like, more recreational things around Cedar Willie because the water parks are for, like, littler kids, and I'm in eighth grade, and I think we should have more, like, outdoor things we could do, like a basketball court undercover or more like an indoor soccer field around here, like, more indoor stuff that we could do because, you know, Washington's like really rainy and wet outside. Like, if we had a water park, I know it's sunny some days and nice some days, but it also rains a lot here. So I think we should have more indoor stuff, and yeah, thank you.
Ali, could you repeat? I need you to repeat your last name because I didn't get it. I'm sorry.
Edson.
Edson.
E-D-S-O-N.
Again, my name is James Moore. I live at 820 Dana Drive. This has nothing to do with any subject that's been brought up here, but something that you might be interested in looking at. I lived in several small towns in Florida in the 60s. Every single one of those towns smaller than Cedar Willie had a teen center where kids could go and be monitored, and they could enjoy different activities. So if you're interested in doing things for our young kids, keeping them out of potential problems, then maybe it's something that at least is worth looking at. And I say this has nothing to do with anything that's been discussed here, but it's something that I think would be worth, well, at least, thinking about. Teen center here for kids to go and enjoy different activities. Almost everyone that I've met to down there had a pool hall. It's a thought.
Thank you, James. Anybody else? Going the other way. Okay, at 7:47, I'll close the public hearing. And council, you have before you a resolution. Before we go there, I did want to comment on a couple of your comments. First, we did have an open house, or this was presented. We received almost unanimously positive comments of that. For the people who spoke about a pool tonight, I'm on board. If we can figure out how to do that, that's one of the things that's been on my list since the day I arrived in town. They're just very, very expensive. And, Helga, I did check with Bellingham. They lose money on it every year. I'm trying to figure out how we could get there and not lose money. So I leave it to the council now. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I have one. Mr. Mayor? The Memorial Park, I'm 100% for improvement. It needs to be renovated, but I'm 100% against a spray park. That's a very busy area. You've got the senior center, the library, and the community center. I was down day before yesterday, and the parking lot between the senior center and the library, there was about eight empty spaces on the north end of that parking lot. And I know for a fact that when you put water in a park, it draws people. And there's going to be a lot of little kids come, and every little kid's going to have a parent, and they're going to have to have a place to park. I know you've got extra parking down the alleyway, some extra parking in front of the community center, but I don't really believe that that's going to take care of all the traffic. And I agree with a lot of these people. I don't think a spray park at the present time is really, really necessary. We've got other things... We've got other things that need to be done first, so I'm against the spray park, but I would like to see Memorial Park renovated and make a nice park. It's in a, in a good spot and have a caretaker there, hopefully that can keep the vandalism out, so that's all I have.
Any other member of council?
I just wanted, I wanted to address Chuck a little bit. In some, oh, sorry. I'm chair of this committee, but I wanted to say that we talked about parking quite a bit and it did expand it. Even this newest plan has more parking than the older one and we could also use the parking at the, at the church. It came to it, we're allowed to do that. Um, and the, and the parking lot-
Sunday's?
Well, no, but we have, but we, yeah, but there are, there are six other days of the week and we also have parking all around on State Street too. They actually made, they expanded to where it is more parking and we have bike racks too. So, there's that to consider. Also, what was the other thing? There was another thing that you said. Was that it?
Chuck, for me.
Oh, I guess that was it.
I'd like to, to say that just to focusing on small children is short sighted. This park is meant for, if you look, families, there's new picnic shelters out of there. There's a, I guess we're going to, what is it called? A yoga pad for the senior center. The senior center's blessing is on this because they want to see, you know, you know, this park is for everyone, not little children. And that's what it's intended for. Another thing, economics, you have families now leaving town to go to Mount Vernon. Larry Otis here, he can attest to the garbages that are found in the, you know, in, in the cans. Those people are there all day long, they're eating lunch, eating dinner. That's not money being spent in Seadruly. It's being spent in Mount Vernon, it's being spent in Burlington. To, to Chuck's point, Burlington shares a parking lot and the park with the senior center. It, it, you know, they thrive together brilliantly. Uh, Mount Vernon, Mount Vernon has no onsite parking, it's parallel parking, a fraction of what we provide here now, so the parking is not an issue. Well, yeah, but we have a caretaker to, to, to avoid that problem. Well, you know, the main, you, you know, I've been along to be an advocate in Seadruly. Before I was on the city council, I've advocated for teens and for a teen center. I think it's very important. But the, the problems that you see at Memorial Park are because of teens. You know, I don't know how many times I've chased kids away from my little children out of that park because they're smoking there, they're doing drugs there. A caretaker there is going to, is going to take care of that problem. Having a park that people want to come to, more eyes in a park are going to scare those people away. No one's going to go there to cause problems if there are families there.
This is not a discussion between the council and the citizens, this is a meeting between us.
So, but, but we have a caretaker in place now. He's there in guard, you know, families coming to the park are going to be watchful. They're not going to let, you know.
Do any other council member have comments?
Yeah, I just want one last point is about the, kind of the, you know, if you look at our interior schools, the kids who live in our neighborhoods that surround that park, all those schools, over 50% poverty. They, they don't have the ability to get in a car and go drive to Mount Vernon to go play in a park. Those kids don't have lawns and hoses to go spray in. The city can provide something, some sort of recreation to kids that don't have that opportunity.
And also, I wanted to make the point that one of the reasons we even thought we should be doing something with this park is because there was vandalizing, vandalism there and lots of, you know, mischief. So, this is why we decided to do something with the park in the first place. And we have a caretaker there and busy, you know, so I-
So, council, you have a resolution before you. The next resolution number is 942-16.
Before we go for voting, I don't recall that we've ever discussed with the Philbin Group to do an alternative option to something other than the, the water park, did we not? This one wasn't a big popular decision that-
You can ask Mr. Otis if you like that question.
I didn't hear the question, so I suspect the audience may not have either.
We had a, an alternative plan for something for teenagers like that covered basketball court or a racquetball court or something in lieu of a water park have that area for infants and then something for-
That was not considered as part of this process.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we-
I believe Mr. Lumley had a question for Mr. Otis, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and City Council. The resolution before you is for funding for the RCO, which is the Recreation and Conservation Office. We have some time if the council wanted to, to make some changes. However, we have a deadline of May 2nd to get a, generally a proposal in. So, that's kind of where we're at right now. As Mr. Berg had mentioned, this is the pro, proposal before you right now. There is very limited room there. We did look at five sites, looked at placing the spray park. There are other facilities throughout your system that are available, just actually right out here, actually, so. But really, it's a, it's the RCO resolution that's before you today.
Thank you, Larry.
Parks we have, nothing is really considered for that.
Right.
Not for what you, what you requested, that is correct.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, a motion that we make a, I guess a resolution number 942-16, a resolution for the city of Seadruly authorizing the staff to apply for funding from the Recreation and Conservation Office of Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program for Memorial Park rehabilitation and spray park project.
Second.
So, motion was made by Councilman Sandstrom, seconded by Councilman Carnegie to, uh, the resolution number 942-Tax 16, a resolution of the City Council of Seadruly authorizing staff to apply for funding from the Recreation and Conservation Office, Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program for the Memorial Park Rehabilitation and Spray Park Project. Any discussion? We've had some already. Anybody got anything else? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed?
Aye.
So, Chuck is opposed and the motion carries. Next, under unfinished business, item six, 2014 Comprehensive Plan Docket. This is a second reading on page 125 of your packet. And is this you, John?
Yes. All right, good evening. So, this is a second read on two ordinances that would update the Seadruly Capital Facilities Plan and make changes to the municipal code regarding impact fees related to that comprehensive plan update. This is part of the 2016 Required Updates that the Growth Management Act requires our comp plan to be updated by June of 2016. The Planning Commission started working on this in early 2014 and as you can see from the size of the document, it's rather long and kind of complicated, lots of moving parts that came together slowly and are, was finally finished by the Planning Commission a couple of months ago, or last month, I think, and brought to the city council now for adoption. Uh, in conjunction with the, this part, this element update, which is, I believe, chapter four or five of the, of the Comprehensive Plan, the Planning Commission has also been working on the other elements of the comp plan in 2015. They have made their recommendations just last week and those will be coming to the city council for review, um, next, the next city council meeting for, that would be a first read. This is a second read. There's two, two ordinances involved here, like I said, one is for updates to the, to update the comprehensive plan with the, the new element, updated element. And the second would be changes to chapter 1560 and chapter 1564 of the Seadruly Municipal Code to update the values for school impact fees and for, for fire impact fees. I can go over those numbers again if you wish. We went over them in detail at the first read, but if there's any further questions, happy to answer.
Council, anyone have questions for John? So, on page 126 of your packet are the recommended motions and next ordinance is 1844-16.
I make a motion to adopt ordinance number, I'm sorry, I missed that number.
1844-16.
To adopt the amendments to the capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan. And I know who I want to hear second that motion.
Well, it can't be me.
I second the motion.
No, 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 Chuck. We come from the planning department. We know what went into this.
I suppose in that same breath I do too, so second.
That's sure, that's a hint there.
That's, that's you, Chuck.
Did you say? Did you counter with you this recommendation?
Yeah.
I've served on the Planning Commission, Judith, also, so I will second.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion has been made for ordinance 1844-16 by Judith Dunley and seconded by either Chuck or Brett, or I'll say Brett. That motion is to adopt the amendments to the capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. The second motion would be for ordinance 1845-16.
I make a motion that we accept, we approve ordinance 1845-16 to adopt the amendments to the chapter 15.60 and 15.64 of the Seadruly Municipal Code regarding fire and school impact fees.
Second.
Motion was, was made by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Carnegie. Ordinance 1845-16 to adopt amendments to chapters 15.60 and 15.64 of the Seadruly Municipal Code regarding fire and school impact fee values. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Okay, new business, I believe this is also you, John. Item seven, proposed adoption of updates to the shoreline master plan. This is a first reading and for council that begins on page 303 of your packet.
This is also a project that the planning department and Planning Commission has worked on for numerous years. I think it was 2010 or 11 when the planning department started working on updates to our shoreline master program, which is a, more or less a set of rules for how development occurs in the shoreline area. And it's also comprehensive plan guiding policies for how development in the shoreline area will develop. The Shoreline Management Act of Washington State requires that every city have, with shorelines, have a shoreline master program in place. And it just so happens that we have a bit of shoreline along Skagit River. It's a rather small amount of area. It includes the shoreline itself, which is, I think, 1400, it's, it's about a quarter mile, I'd say, of Riverfront Park shoreline area. And 200 feet from the ordinary high watermark and/or 200 feet landward from the floodway, which is different than the flood plain. So, there is floodway down there, so long and short of it, it goes basically up to about the bench right below Dunlop Street and the Life Care Center, or I'm sorry, it's the Birchwood Center. So, everybody knows where there's sort of that rise up from, from the lowland where the, where Riverfront Park is to the upland. That's about where the jurisdiction runs from, from the river. The shoreline jurisdiction also would incorporate any wetlands that fall anyplace in the, in the flood plain in the city, but not wetland buffers. So, there might be a wetland in the city that that would apply to, but I'm not aware of one. So, as I said, these, these are required updates to the shoreline management program that the state has required us to have done. They've actually been pretty lenient with us on our timeframes to get it done. And because of short staffing and just a large workload, it's taken an extra long time to get this done, so it's, it's time for us to finally move this forward and glad that we have the opportunity to do so now.
Council, have any questions for John? John, I want to thank you for the work on this because I know it's tedious and hard work and it's, because it's tedious and hard work just to read it, but I appreciate all the time that you spend on it and there's no action tonight, so thank you. And we are down to department reports. Jason.
Good evening. So, a couple of things going on for us in the police department. Next week, we have one of our reserve police officers, David Adams. He'll be testing for a level one reserve, which that means he'll, when he comes in, we require him to do 16 hours a month. He'll come in and be able to grab a patrol car and go out and patrol on his own with other officers on duty. So, that'd be a big benefit and added labor to us by having him out on the street helping us out. And then secondly, some of you maybe were already, the Washington State Patrol had a pursuit that came through Seadruly this afternoon. They chased a suspect out of Seadruly, went up river, turned around, came back. He came through at a really high rate of speed. We blocked off the intersections by AMP him there just to keep people out of the way. As they came through, suspect went through the downtown area. We terminated the pursuit just for safety reasons. He then slowed down, we were able to get behind him again with no lights or sirens as we followed him out of town. He went out the South, towards the South Skagit Highway on Highway nine and we pulled him over, or attempted to pull him over again at the park and ride, where he pulled him in the park ride, the South Skagit and gave up. So, we were able to take him into custody and was transferred to State Patrol, so that worked out pretty good. So, other than that, that's the excitement for us today.
Sounds like winning to me.
It was a win.
Yes, sir. Chief Klinger.
I always get stuck following the guy that gives the exciting, I'm not sure about that. We have, we've lost another resident. They're going to the US Navy, they leave in September, so we're, once again, we're testing for volunteer residents to fill our house here. The, the testing will be May 14th, so if you know of anybody that is interested or would like to become a volunteer resident. Our replacement engines on schedule, we should see it the first week of June. They're sharing us, it'll be that, so I'm expecting it sometime in July. So, I, that's just seems to be the way things have gone with them. And they've actually started this week on the search facility for the police and fire up at Station Two and I'm amazed at how fast this thing goes. They said there'll be- They said they'll be done with it next week. So it's almost done. If you want to go take a peek at it, you can see it at the stages as walls go up. So that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, John.
Nothing to you.
Mark, I see you have late material?
Yes, I have a late material for you. I apologize for bringing it in this way, but I literally received this this morning. What it is, is the construction agreement with the Department of Transportation that allows us to construct our roundabout project on Highway 9 within their jurisdictional route. And so this is necessary for us to proceed with the project. The contract was signed, was returned to us today from the contractor, SRV, and so we're ready to have our pre-construction conference and go to work on this. This is a necessary element, so I brought it to you as late materials, hoping that you could approve this so that we can get this finalized and be ready to turn the contractor loose in about two or three weeks on the construction phase.
Okay, counsel, you have a suggested motion before you?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize Public Works Director Mark Freyberger to execute the attached construction agreement, GCB 2391, between the City of Cedar Wally and the Washington State Department of Transportation for purpose of constructing a portion of the Jameson Arterial Improvements Project on State Right-of-Way.
Second.
The motion was made by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Kinzer to authorize Public Works Director Mark Freyberger to execute the attached construction agreement, GCB 2391, between the City of Cedar Wally and the Washington State Department of Transportation for the purpose of constructing a portion of the Jameson Arterial Improvement Project on State Right-of-Way. Any discussion?
I just, I have one question that might not even be related, but I was curious about the speed limit that we kind of talked about before.
I'll discuss that just in a minute.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
So the speed limit change, which you approved the ordinance last week to authorize, this is one of the rare occasions when I can report that DOT has moved with alacrity. That's quickly. And so they've actually already authorized this at the state engineer's level and they are scheduling to change the signs. They tell me that'll take about five weeks. I'm telling them they need to do it a little quicker. And so we're hoping that'll happen in conjunction. We do need that in place to begin our construction phase, but everything is in place, so I appreciate again you're considering that last week and that's moving forward. Also on that same project, today we completed our consultant selection process for two firms to support the construction phase. We selected a surveying company and a materials testing company. We have scheduled the pre-construction conference for that contract for May the 11th. The next council meeting is also May the 11th. I would propose to counsel tonight, we'll have those contracts on the 11th agenda for your approval. I still have to go through some negotiation phases with them before I can complete them, but I'll have that done in time to submit for the council packet for the 11th meeting. But I do typically want to have a representative from those firms at my pre-construction conference. If you're amenable to that, I would like to propose, subject to your approval of that contract, authorizing them to represent their firms at that pre-construction meeting, which will be later, or earlier in the day that same day. There's just a little risk on that. If you, if you choose not to approve those contracts for some reason, then I'll have to pay them for their time separately from the contract. But it's important that they are represented at the pre-construction conference. So that's, I just wanted to see if I could have a counsel concurrence for that plan to move forward with that, with the understanding that you will see those contracts the evening of the 11th.
So I have a question. Did you not mention that they actually came in under what we estimated they would?
The construction contract itself?
Yes.
Yes, it came in slightly under our estimate, yes. Yeah, we're in good shape budget-wise. And these two support contracts, we're negotiating them. I have fixed budgets for them, which I'm confident we're going to stay within. I've been doing this long enough to know what these two types of work will result in.
Is there any objection to that course of action?
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And I guess the last thing, did you want me to talk about the work session? All right, that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Berg?
All right, a couple items. First, I just wanted to call your attention to our inaugural issue of the Cedar Wally City Scene. I've received two complimentary emails so far. And for those of you who've been on the council for a while, you know that the positive comments are few and far between for this work and the negatives are generously lauded upon us in the public service. So to get two positives right out of the gate is pretty exciting. We're interested in input from anybody. If there's information you want, other articles, and we intend to do this four times a year. So this is the first version. My contact's in there. You know how to find me, Mary. Let me know and we can get that ball rolling. So second item is STEM Network. We're continuing to work very closely with the school district, with our industry partners and our chamber folks. I've been just really, really impressed with the quality of the work coming through the school district. And that is probably one of the greatest untold stories in the area is what's happening at the Cedar Wally schools. Our STEM Network has offered us a glimpse into the way that works. I've also noticed, and I talked to a lot of other cities around the state, the relationship between the City of Cedar Wally and the Cedar Wally School District is just remarkably strong. And I appreciate the superintendent, the school board. You know, that is something that I think benefits everybody. And you'll hear more about the STEM Network. We'll be presenting that, the superintendent and I, on May 9th to the school board and on May 11th to the city council as this project continues to progress. More information will be coming out there, but it's very exciting. You know, at the end of the day, every time we meet, we find out what's happening. It's just all good news, really. Everything very positive. CGI has completed their work in city, so look for some video links to our website. I'm not sure when exactly, but that's happened. The mayor and I toured Hillsview with the Cedar Wally Housing Authority here maybe about a week ago. That was interesting. Last time I was there was when Stan Sigatowicz had his 90th birthday, which has been a few years. And we went through, toured the units. A lot of people don't fully appreciate that the housing authority was actually created by the City of Cedar Wally. And the city has authority for appointing its members. So I don't see Phil out here anymore. Our library director and board are in this book. The housing authority, however, is conspicuously absent. So that would be something we need to add in the future. So we've got that in our directory of when do they meet and how do you get involved. Well-run operation. I thought it was very impressive. I don't know if the mayor will have other comments, but really appreciated the staff. And the way this is executed is the Cedar Wally Housing Authority essentially contracts with King County Housing Authority to manage the operations. And they run about 80 units and I think four buildings in Cedar Wally. Really nice, high-quality units and an impressive operation. You, the council, will see appointments. We failed really in tracking our appointment calendars for the past five-ish years. So of the five members, there's only one working within a current term. There are three who are holdovers, so they're still legally empowered to act in their position until their successor's replaced. And then there's one true vacancy. So the mayor's working with the board and trying to figure out who's who and will bring appointments to you for confirmation soon. And the last thing I've got is the work session that's currently scheduled for May 4th. Our item on that was a Public Works departmental review. So we've talked about hitting all of the departments through the year and we've talked with police so far and library. Our plan was to hit Public Works next and then we have our summer recess and then roll into fall, we get finance, you know, fire planning and so on. The May 4th work session, both the mayor and I will be out of town. And so our Public Works Department has said, gee, we'd really rather come when we've got everybody there. Would it be possible to do this when the June work session would normally be? So the May work session is scheduled for May 4th. The request for the council is, could we cancel the May 4th work session and instead have the June 1st date, which would be the normal date for a work session, although we are not currently scheduled to have one that night, have that work session instead? That's a question for you. Does that work for you? I'm seeing and nodding, does that, does that not work for anybody? Is that a date where somebody's already out of town or something like that? I don't see anybody. All right, so then we'll put out a notice canceling the May 4th and another notice calling the June 1st meeting. That's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Patsy?
Commercial sewer accounts within the City of Cedar Wally are billed based upon consumption of water. For years, the city has received monthly or bi-monthly water usage reports from the PUD so that we in turn can bill our commercial customers. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, the PUD has implemented a new, they call it customer service software. You may have noticed if you've gotten your bill from PUD this month, it has changed. Well, the IT department is struggling to get a report to us in any usable format that shows, you know, the information in a way that we can use to bill. We bill on Monday, so we're getting real close to the wire. I just wanted to keep you apprised of the situation that, you know, everyone else will be able to be billed, but we'll have to figure out what we're going to do for the commercial folks if they don't come up with this information in the next few days. Other than that, everything is pretty normal in the finance department for this time of year.
Okay, Judith?
Well, I am on the Skagit County EMS Delivery Model Advisory Group, representing all of you and all of your constituents in offering guidance over the next eight months and how we would prefer the emergency services to be delivered in the county. And, you know, with myself and 30 of, about 30 other people.
Good luck.
Thanks.
So if you have ideas, bring them to Judith. Anything else, Judith?
No.
Jermaine?
I was going to remind folks about the Rotary Auction, but then I realized there's at least two of us here who are Rotarians, so I thought, leave it to you. I wish we could do it in Cedar Wally. One year we'll be able to have the auction here, I'm hoping. But I'm hoping that either you or Rick will be able to talk about the auction, please.
Thanks. Brenda?
Oh, yeah. I just want to bring to attention again Sergeant Harris. Maybe you can update us on the protests that's happening May 13, 14, 15, and the concerns that may be going on county-wide.
Well, not really. Just because we're so far away from it, we don't have a whole lot of information on it. Chief Tucker was at the Chiefs and Sheriff's Meeting earlier this week. Anacortes and the Sheriff's Office and State Patrol's really gearing up for the protest out at the refinery that's scheduled for the May 13th, 14th, 15th. Cedar Wally's plan is we're going to kind of double up our patrol staff and our goal is we will backfill the Sheriff's Office of Burlington or Mount Vernon Police Departments if they need help with calls for service such as thefts or domestic, sort of things like that. Sergeant McElrath is on the county's HRT team, the high-risk entry team, so he will be out there that weekend as well as part of that team, as well as Detective Eaton, who's on the negotiation team, in case their resources are needed. Other than that, we don't have a whole lot. I know the Sheriff's Office in Anacortes is gearing up really heavily. Their last I heard, they're anticipating 3,000 to 5,000 protesters and I don't know if that number's changed as of late. Again, Chief Tucker, at that last meeting, didn't have a whole lot of updated information. I don't know if anything's really changed at this point from what we already know.
Are the recommendations to stay away from?
Stay away. Yeah. That weekend is a good way to stay away from the water, I think, would be best. The further inland, the better, I think you'll be.
Thank you.
Be back.
Any others? Julia?
Nope, nothing.
Chuck?
Yes, I'd like to ask Aaron if it would be possible to organize a tour through the new jail. I would be interested in going down there and I'm sure some of these other people would too.
Yeah, I think I may have reported that I toured the new jail probably two weeks ago, so I'd be glad to see what we can do about getting an elected tour, maybe at the next stage. So I'll be glad to ask that question, see if we can set that up.
Thank you.
Rick?
No city things, but in regards to the Rotary Auction that Jermaine was talking about, it is on Friday, May 6th. There are a few tickets available. Rotary netted last year, what, Dean, $138,000 or something? So a lot of that money goes back to community service projects. $35,000 last year went to high school scholarships here in Cedar Wally and concrete. So if there's an interest, let Dean or Keith or myself know or get ahold of Sue Stradoff down at Duane Lane's Ford for tickets or something. It's a good benefit. Good time, good, good service opportunity. There's no city things.
Brett?
On behalf of Little Ogden, he enjoyed the Public Works Day at Memorial Park. I would like to thank the police, the fire department, the public works, the library for having the activities for the kids. They loved it. Every kid was happy and, I don't know if, you know, maybe next time we'll remind everyone to wear earplugs, but it was a blast. And second, I would like to thank the mayor for heading to the eastern part of our state to attend a Main Street program and help find solutions for our downtown. So thanks for doing that.
You're welcome. So my turn. I would like to echo what Aaron said about our housing authority. Very impressed. And Rita's here and I don't know how many other members, but great job. It took me, what, a year to get in there because they follow their rules very carefully and you just can't go in there. But it's very well-run and I think the city can be proud of that. As Brett said, I was in Shalan doing a Main Street revitalization seminar and I guess the good news is, is we're not alone when it comes to not having enough philanthropic millionaires who want to invest in our buildings that are not doing much anymore downtown. But I did learn a lot and I'll share that with you in between. Friday is the county track meet. It was moved from Cedar Wally over to Burlington because of our roofing problem and the associated wiring, so we don't have loudspeaker. If you have a chance on Friday, I think it starts around 3:30 in the afternoon to go see our kids run. We got some great kids out there and... Do you mention the school play?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I would encourage, I think it starts tomorrow, but at the auditorium at Cedar Wally, there's a school play going on. I recommend you take it in.
Cinderella, Cinderella.
I'm sorry, Cinderella.
Details on page 23 of the City Scene.
Yeah, and so Aaron was doting on his compliments, so I got one from a second grader class and this one's a keeper. So it says, "The mayor is smart and strong." I want y'all to remember that. At this time, we're going to go into executive session to discuss litigation. We'll be in there for about 15 minutes. There'll be no action, so I guess that's a way of saying I wouldn't sit here and wait for us to come out and then adjourn. And thank you all for coming. Have a good evening.
And that'll be RCW 4230-1101I.
What he said, so we're in executive from 8:29.
What he said, so, uh, we're in executive from eight-twenty-nine.
Thursdays, Tuesdays. Tuesdays and the third Thursday. I know, it's the third Tuesday, the third Thursday.
Okay, we're back from executive with no action at eight forty-nine. Anyone?
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Judith and seconded by everybody. Let's go. This meeting is adjourned.